He has decided that the project called Nigeria is not moving forward and for that reason, he has decided to throw his hat into this race. So, today we will be talking to him about his plans, his aspirations and other things, other matters that could arise out of the discussion. But before we bring him forward, let me tell us once again that this event is being hosted by We4We TV, Val Media and Val Amadi Foundation. So today, we are under this auspices and Asolok is also supporting. Please let us rise as we recite the national anthem. Alright, let's sing it if I'm if I'm, let's go, one, two, go. Thank you. Alright ladies and gentlemen, the man of the moment, please help me welcome the youngest presidential aspirant so far.
Thank you, thank you.
President of the President Union, CEO Sahara Reporters and current presidential aspirant of Omoylele Shawore.
Thank you, thank you, our country, our future, thank you.
Wow, thank you, thank you. Alright, let me just acknowledge some of our special guests. Let me start with the one who is doing us proud in the city of Newark. Ladies and gentlemen, please help me welcome the deputy mayor of Newark and the first African and first Nigerian to hold such post, Honorable Okochukwu Moro. Still in the city of Newark. Working diligently to make sure that our voice is heard. He is a member of the Newark African Commission. Please help me welcome ever hardworking Honorable Okem Inoset Okemi. Let me also acknowledge the presence of the chairman of board of commissioners, City of Orange Diaspora Commission. He is Honorable Carl Onyukie. But that, that is not where his power comes from. His power comes from the fact that he has a four-year term on the City of Orange planning board. That's a big powerful position. Let's give him a big round of applause. Honorable Carl Onyukie.
Thank you, how are you sir? Thank you, Honorable.
And also have here, one of the leading legal minds in this community, a big legal luminary. Former leader in the Ibo, World Ibo Congress, please help me welcome Attorney Chalitikizie Triple C, Chief Chalitikizie. I have another good Nigerian here. As a matter of fact, he was a part of the preliminary planning committee of the governor of New Jersey. Please help me welcome philanthropist, Doctor Iwoso Obi洛. I also have a president of various associations, they are here tonight. Let me first of all welcome the president of Abia Imostes Association of Nigeria and the Americas, the carrier one, Honorable Oliver Obi. Let's put our hands together for him. He is accompanied here by a long-term member of that organization and a leader in this community. Ladies and gentlemen, please welcome Chief Mike Anokam Udlakomiliwan. He is a youth leader as we see him and as we know him, a convener of the Nigerian grassroots movement. Ladies and gentlemen, a man who is working tirelessly to put Nigeria back where it belongs in the international scene. Help me welcome Doctor Nelson Azuya, are you here? Nelson Azuya, sorry. Alright, I also have a lot of doctors in the house tonight. I have my good friend and a family doctor, Doctor Adi Fowodju, are you, are you here? I also have Mr. Yinka Fadion, are you here? Alright, if I haven't mentioned you, please do not, do not crucify me. It's just that we have plenty to do tonight. But that will not stop me from mentioning the president of the most upward mobile sociocultural group in this community, my good friend, Chief Selsosokani. So ladies and gentlemen, let me also not fail to mention the leader of the Ibo sociocultural organization here in New Jersey. Even though you'll be seeing a lot of him tonight, but ladies and gentlemen, help me welcome the Iguo of Odima Anedu, Iguo Nkimono Maro. He's here with his vice president, the one they call Milenwilo Songito of Kegaz Club. You're welcome sir. Alright, without further ado, let us send here from the convener of this event. Let's have a word for him. Ladies and gentlemen, please help me welcome the president and CEO of We4We TV, President CEO Val Amadi Foundation, President CEO, he's plenty too much. But ladies and gentlemen, please help me welcome Mr. Val Amadi. Activating in the crowd. Might I also mention the chief strategist of tonight's event? Ladies and gentlemen, a man that has worked tirelessly behind the scene, please help me acknowledge Mr. Valentine of Hope. Alright, I'm going to hand the microphone over to Mr. Val Amadi to welcome us officially and then say one or two things before we go into question and answer. Welcome sir.
Thank you very much. Yes, Prince Anosee, I thank you very much. And I thank everybody for coming here today. I would like to once again thank Mr. Omoylele Shawore. He's one of a kind and I'm happy that he was able to accept our invitation to speak to wonderful people like us all today. So Mr. Shawore, thank you once again. I would like to also acknowledge the presence of the most wonderful people in the world and those are you people. Everybody that's in here somehow, give a round of applause to yourselves. You guys have touched lives in many ways, in more ways than one. But a lot of the times when we touch lives, we hardly realize we are touching lives. And that's why when we do things, we have to do things the right way most of the times. Like my MC said, activism, I take runs in my blood. My father was a community service leader. He was, he was a philanthropist and he was just dedicated to giving to people that earned him the title of the Enya Hawa, that's the friend to all. But he's still rest in peace, he passed on last year. Rest in peace. So it's in us. Anything for the community, we do this for the people. A lot of times people wonder what's going on. Yes, We4We TV, we engage in a lot of different programming, we engage with the community outreach programming, we engage with the industry situation. We just do things to help the community and to help the people. Yes, as apolitical as we are, which we know, we understand that politics plays a very important role in our lives. So our job is to make it a lot easier for the people. How do we do that? We can take steps to bring about sanity and sanctity into the electoral process. And when we're able to do that, we can help administer policies that will do better for the people in general. Not getting involved does not get it solved. You don't even have to be political to get involved. Sometimes you just have to listen. When you listen to people, listen to the political people, hear them out, let's see and hear who has the best ideas or interests for the people. That way we can educate our voters a little better. And when we have better voter education, we can effect a better electoral process and hopefully have better governance, which is what we all are going for, especially with the government in Africa. Assistants, we've invited and we will be inviting different candidates to talk to the people. That's what We4We TV does. I met Mr. Shawore and I told him about what we're doing and he's very, very happy and he's excited to be, to be associated with us. He had a rally last week in New York and it was, it was like a love fest. Everybody was just go crazy because of his ideas. And I thought those ideas would be nice to be built to my people, so my people can hear some of those ideas and let's see where he's coming from. Open-mindedly and then we'll see what happens from there. And also, he was in London a few days ago, another situation. But without going to, for, I want to welcome everybody once again and I'm encouraging everybody to have an open mind, listen, enjoy the night and then also have your questions and I'm sure Mr. Shawore will be glad to answer most of our questions. And when we live here today, let us continue with the service, with the spirit of community service, the spirit of activism, the spirit of getting involved. No time for bystanders, apathy. Let's avoid apathy, let's get involved. Talk to the people back home. The diaspora community has a lot of influence on the whole base community. So when we do, we have to find a way to get, since we have a lot of financial influence on our people, we can try to help affect the party and the governance with the administrations back home. There's a study that says Nigerians in the diaspora make about 6 billion dollars to Nigeria yearly and Nigerian politicians spend considerably less than that during the electoral process. And yet they are more effective in confusing our people. So why don't we use our economic powers to do voter education, help our people get better, let our people get better educated about voter education, so we can choose the better people to govern us and hopefully we can have better generations to come. Once again, welcome, thank you very much. And before, before I, I want to say, I want to say thank you, special thank you to the, to most of the people that have made this possible. A lot of people in here made this possible. But I want to just say thank you extra to our strategist with us. We have a group called the Moswaka Movement. The Moswaka Movement is just about the taking back movement. We're tired of the craziness in Nigeria. We believe that our, our leaders should declare their assets, get involved, let us know what they're going to do and when they're there, they should live a clean life and do their best for the family, for the, for the country. That's what we believe in the Moswaka Movement. So if they cannot do that, the Moswaka.
That's right.
That's what we believe. We're taking back, taking back, taking back, taking back. Yes, Val Abeta is one of us, thank you very much. Please my brother, come over here. Good morning, come over here. Iguo is a community leader and he's a wonderful person. He's helped pull this event together as well. Amadi, see Amadi is not here right now. Prince, Prince Ogengi, Anosee Ogengi, where's the Berachio Karikke? Wonderful individual, I know you're being crowded, come over here please. We need you one second. Berachio is also with We4We TV. He's the best drones pilot. This guy, he flies all our drones, he does all our aerial videography. And he's also the chairman CEO of Amanda, Kia, Teachers and Diapers in Nigeria. He's an entrepreneur and he just added another master's degree to his faculty today. Yes, master's degree.
Master's in Information Management and Security.
Yes, this guy, he just collects all those masters. So we're having a double celebration today and we're happy to have you. And then a lot of other people that are here. Mayor, Mayor Ogomo Koru, very instrumental, wonderful individual. The chairman of the commission, Agar Karonyukin, involved. Where's Mary Jane? Mary Jane is assistant creative director for We4We TV. Mary Jane, come over here, don't be hiding. Will you? Okay, so she's a wonderful person. So thank you very much, once again. Mr. MC, my hand don't tie, maybe I hand them over. Bless you.
Thank you. I am, while introducing Mr. Val Amadi, I didn't tell you guys that he is also a commissioner on the board of the City of Orange. So please, I'm sorry that I butchered that. In order that, in fact, I'm very happy that she has just arrived, we were expecting her earlier. Please, the CEO of Sahara Kilichi, please, can you come, take your seat? Please come forward, please. Rachel Adamo, please take your seat in front here. Thank you so much for coming. Alright ladies and gentlemen, the night is fast spent. I would have loved for the deputy mayor to just say one or two things and then we go into questions and answers. You good? Alright sir, thank you. I, I thank you for sending your time to us, thank you. Alright ladies and gentlemen, the die is cast right now. We are about to go into the question and answer session. But before then, let's call on our presidential aspirant, CEO of Sahara Reporters.
Thank you, thank you, our country, our future, thank you.
Thank you very much, thank you. I want to thank the organizers of tonight's events, particularly Friday, Four and Amadi for bringing me to this city here. I was told not to reveal to you that I live in New Jersey. So I had to be, I had to pretend as if I flew in from, not back into New Jersey. But I've been around here for 19 years. I walk out of New York City and so I'm one of you feel at home to ask me any questions you might want. I want to also thank the deputy mayor here, one of the people who actually started Sahara Reporters. One of you know the guy named Rudolph Okonkwo, Rudolph, Dr. Diamond. So, and just for the purpose of public revelations, they've never said this before, one of the people that first gave us money for Sahara Reporters was actually Professor Chinua Tchibbi. One day I saw Chinua Tchibbi and he asked me whether you, what to write next. I said, he should tell me his tattoos. And he gave me one long tattoo and I said, he said, do you understand? I said, no, I said, I will use it for my next password. So I used to go up to him and just joke about things, great man. And he inspired us a lot, even towards the end of his life. One of the things he did that I was really proud of was when, because of what happened in Anambra State, he rejected the national awards by the Nigerian government. They don't make them like that anymore, yes. So I'm glad to be your midst and recently, as you are all aware, I decided that I was tired of doing the reporting job. I was just simply tired of reporting elections and bringing in rogues and mediocres into office, especially considering how many who I've met during Sahara Reporters and how many brilliant Nigerians are all over the place. And when we came here this night, I was just convinced more and more, you know, with a number of doctors sitting in the house, lawyers sitting in the house, the police officer sharing that I saw, who actually was very impressive and I said to him, when we win next year, we're taking you with us.
Take it back, take it back.
As you can imagine, you know, what they can bring to bear on the country. So our country Nigeria can't wait to be taken care of in a way that it can unleash itself on the rest of the world. When people ask me, you know, is this just for Nigeria, you know, no, if Nigeria gets it right, the entire African continent will get it right. I don't know how many times you've been stopped before by another African who says what is wrong with you Nigerians, because I see we are the ones holding their destiny, you know, with our own under development. They say that to me all the time. And the same thing with black people, you know, black people generally will look at you, say you're from Nigeria and they're like, my goodness, what's, what's wrong with your country? Why don't you guys get it right so that they can also have a pride of place on the continent? I don't need to regale you with our problems, they are so numerous that I actually just came from Nigeria, did 23 days in Nigeria and I traveled from the north to the southeast and also to some south-south state and I'm going back. So I brought a lot of good greetings to all of your brothers, you know, from Uwari and the nature, I said, you say nde wo. But what is amazing and also very sad is that the moment we get to every part of Nigeria, there is a local person that is a creator of the problem and is managing the problem. Uwari is one example that I saw. Is anybody here from Uwari?
Yes.
Yes, it's the most mismanaged city I've ever seen in Nigeria. And I said it when we were in Uwari without fear, that Rochas Okorocha should be sent to the International Criminal Court of Justice. In the way he mismanaged the resources, it took us longer from the airport in Uwari to get to the place where we did the speech than it took us to get from Lagos to Uwari. The guy is the worst governor that's probably is anywhere in Nigeria that I'm saying. And I hope when we get to office and with the new ESSC building that I just reviewed that I heard has a lot of nice cells, people like Rochas can spend some time there answering to how he mismanaged resources I met for. But he's not the only one, just using him as an example. We went to Unicha as well, because a lot of people know Unicha very well. And we were in this traffic for almost an hour. When we go to the scene of the traffic, the port hole there was not more than this table. And you are wondering, does this country have a government? So you send the army to go and do propeller deaths, but you cannot send the army to, the army corps of engineer to just fix the roads in Unicha. But truth is that honestly, we don't have a government. That's my own as a student, that's where I'm coming from. And we are just at ground zero when we start, we start as if we never had anything before. And we will develop faster if we have that kind of mentality. Even our budgeting process, when we win will be a zero budgeting process. So that we don't have any illusion that we are starting from where they start, because they never started, that's the truth. Nigeria has been around for 58 years, as most of you know. But as a nation, Nigeria has lived longer than most of its citizens. When Nigeria got independence in 1916, it was expected that the neighboring Nigeria would live 70 years. The life expectancy of Nigeria now is about 43, maybe 50 something. So if we are born in 1960, as opposed to have died by now, that's the country, and it's real, people are dying like flies. There is no, there's nothing, there's nothing that doesn't kill people in Nigeria. If you have malaria, it can kill you. Anything pretty much can kill you. And if all these communicable or non-communicable diseases don't kill you, the government is out there waiting to shoot you at the slightest provocation. You see a police officer, just over 20 naira bribe, they'll kill you and run away. It's just a mess. But in being a mess, there's also something that is there that is encouraging for me in this, in this period that I traveled around recently, is the spirit of the Nigerian person has not been broken yet. It's unimaginable how people just stay very optimistic that things will be alright, even though there's nothing alright around them. So people are very hardworking there, they are hardworking and that is why when I was there was the time that President Buhari made that very silly statement that Nigerians are, young people are lazy people. All we saw in the southeast are very hardworking people. We even have a video, if you have time, you can check it out online. And people were struggling to make ends meet. They are doing their own part, you know. So I'm not here to appeal to any of those sentiments. I know that we are in a very sensitive place in Nigeria right now and one of the things that I was told when I was coming here, I said, you know, you are going to speak to the southeastern brothers in East Orange, please don't talk about secession, you know. And I said, you are wasting your time. It's not only the southeastern us that are, that are planning to secede from Nigeria. A lot of Nigerians have mentally seceded from Nigeria, that's the truth. Because every house in Nigeria is like a local government. You have to provide your water, your electricity, you have to provide the security. So you really don't feel belonged to Nigeria. And I said, if you want to know how bad things are in Nigeria, you're going to take a ship, a Titanic to Nigeria and ask let, if who wants to leave. Even governors will climb, senators will follow that ship out of Nigeria, because they don't believe in the country. How do you know these things if you are flying back from Nigeria on Delta these days, when you used to go to Atlanta and now it comes to New York directly from Lagos. Sitting next to you is somebody who is pregnant, who is coming to have their baby here. And they are not people who are just ordinary people, they are children or wives of politicians. When Yaradua was empowered, the daughter married the governor of Bauchi. When the lady was about to have a baby, they flew her here so that they can get that American passport. They no longer have to live in a Nigerian passport anymore. A lot of them are also not Nigerians, in all reality. I mean, in reality, the number three person in Nigeria is Bokola Sarafi. He's not in Nigeria, he was born in the UK. Of course, our constitution says that if your father is in Nigeria, you are also in Nigeria. A lot of my kids were born here, they are Nigerians. But I'm saying that in their insight, in genetically, they don't feel like part of us. And if you have a problem in Nigeria today, they will just, they will ship out. Nigeria is just serving as a social security department, where they retire and just keep collecting. Some of the people who are in government in Nigeria are getting paid their pensions and also collecting salaries. So people are supposed to have jobs. Don't have jobs, people who are not supposed to have jobs have two jobs in Nigeria. I'm just giving you an overview of how bad things are. When they don't have to continue to be bad. Because we all can join hands together and force the country to be a better place. We are already doing it. We send about forty billion dollars officially to Nigeria as, as foreigns. And I guarantee you that another twenty billion probably goes on officially. The reason is that, you know, when you want to send ten thousand dollars, you don't go to Western Union. You go and stay at the airport, looking for somebody to help you take the money. Or you hide it inside something just to take it out. Because the money must get there. And so many of us are the employers of the little laborers in the country that are paying minimum wage to pay our workers. We hire people from here and pay them, you know, very decent wages. But we don't even have a right to vote in Nigeria. In fact, the moment you arrive in, there's a way they start to treat you as if we have come to treating the future of the country. It is official that we are discriminated against. And one of the things I said and that we do when we get into office next year, which I'm sure will happen by the way.
Take it back! Take it back!
When we take Nigeria back, no Nigerian will have to get a visa to go to Nigeria. Whether you have an American passport or you don't have an American passport or you have a Nigerian passport, the moment you are Nigerian, you should be able to go home and come back whenever you want, it should be visa-free. In fact, we are looking at any African-American who has tested his or her DNA and wants to relocate to Nigeria or travel to Nigeria, it will be visa-free as well. There's nothing in Nigeria that we can do for visa-free. And the diaspora voting that you all have been talking about is going to come in the mail. It will be the first thing we will do when we get there. It's for me, it's not as if the diaspora can do anything automatic about the elections in Nigeria. But even that mental feeling that you can change things by voting, it's something we must give to you composedly. Because you are the ones driving the economy in Nigeria. Forget about America, Europe and all these other countries who are claiming they are doing foreign investment. They are not doing no foreign investment in Nigeria. We are the greatest foreign investors in that country. Because the investment we are making into Nigeria, we are not expecting any returns from it. When Americans go and invest in your country, they will take triple the profit from the place. But we, when we send money home, we don't expect any returns. And that is why this time around, when you are sending money home, you must attach a condition to it. Any member of your family who asks for a remittance, ask them to send you a copy of their PVC. If they don't have it, you can hold on to the remittance for a while. We have to use it to change the behavior of our people. They are apathy towards voting for leaders. Because that is how we end up allowing people who should not choose our leaders to choose our leaders for us. If you see Nigerian politicians, no matter how educated they are, they don't preach to educated people. They go to the market to go and give money, rice. You know, they give a karabrande to people who they know will really vote. Because they know they at least don't vote. They are too cocky and arrogant to vote. But if you see the analysis on Facebook, very fantastic. But when election time is coming, they will run away from the country. After election, they will be calling home. "Is there any crisis? Can I come back now?" You know. And then you wonder why you keep electing idiots into office in our country. That will have to change and we have seen that that is changing. So, without taking too much of your time, I want to encourage you to ask questions. And in asking questions, we are here to answer to the best of our abilities. I am careful to ask people in the US to ask me questions because you know too much. That's the problem. But the advantage we have here is that you questioning me is not as if you are trying to ridicule me. You are questioning me because you want to see how knowledgeable I am about the things that are important to you. And also if I can learn from what you know about the things that are important to you. So I'll be happy to take as many questions as possible. Our leaders who have been in power, I've seen seven of them since nineteen eighty-nine that I started as an activist come and go, they don't take questions. In fact, what has been happening even in our democratic elections is that they'll decide not to debate. I want to debate any one of them who is campaigning.
Take it back! Take it back! Take it back!
But they know that if we enter into a debate, the election will be over in debate night. Because what is it that they will be campaigning on? What are we going to debate about? Are we debating their failure? They don't want to debate, but we must also make it composedly that they debate. So in saying that you are bringing more candidates, please bring them in here. Bring the ones that can debate and also try and get the ones that cannot debate. And you know them already, yes. And they will not come. But let's make a decision not to vote for anybody who will not talk to us about their policies, about the future of the country, about all the issues that are important to you. Of which I hear from our brothers here is restructuring of Nigeria. And this is one question that is very contentious because Nigeria as a nation has become broke and is broken. And there's a lot of issues in Nigeria. But in discussing the future of Nigeria, we cannot leave out one very important issue. Is that have we tried a good leader before?
No.
No, that's the question. We have been trying and what they call try and error in terms of leadership. We have been recycling the same old people. In fact, when I was in the southeast, somebody was asking me, "Oh, you as a young person, you cannot do this thing." And I asked them, "Who is the person that can do it? Is it, is it the people that fought the civil war? That you expect to continue and you expect them to love you?" They fought the war, they have not ended the war in their heart. They have not ended the war in their head. When the war was fought and ended, I was one year old. I didn't shoot anybody in Ashaba. I didn't shoot anybody anywhere in Igbo Land. And I don't have the mentality of fighting the war. I want to develop the southeast. I want to develop the northeast. I want to develop the southwest. I want to develop the south-south.
Take it back! Take it back! Take it back!
I do not want to send any operation down to the southeast that is not Operation Education or Operation Roots. We should by now have completed the second Naja Bridge or, and the third Naja Bridge should be finished by now with a cargo train that is taking goods and services out of the southeast. Because you know what? I love to say this because my brother is married to an Igbo lady from Oga. And one thing I discovered in Igbo Land is that the Igbo man has conquered the world. But I don't know what is it with you guys and your villages. You love your village, you want to go back there. And we must give you that right to love your village as much as you want by integrating the southeast with the rest of the country. The non-integration of the southeast is deliberate. It's a continuation of the war. And when I said this, I was warned by some of the security people that I am speaking hatred, that I'm, I'm doing hate speech. I said, "You know, the biggest hatred you can do to a people is not to allow them to develop at their own pace or not to allow them to do what they love to do." And that is what the leadership in Nigeria has been doing to the southeast. But it's not only the southeast. Everybody is here to ransom. We are in a state of what they call arrested development in Nigeria across the country. And only a leadership that is prepared, that has capacity, both intellectual and sometimes even physical capacity will be able to take Nigeria on a path of progress, peace and prosperity. And we cannot have peace in Nigeria without justice. There has to be economic justice, cultural justice, there has to be political justice. We have to do justice at every level to the people of Nigeria and people who no longer feel that they are part of Nigeria. There are a lot of people who feel that way, that is the truth. So I will stop here and take more, I mean, as many questions as you want to throw at me. If I cannot answer any of your questions, I will direct you to Google.
And we are very proud of them. Mr. Mayor, you are very instrumental to this project and I want to thank you very much. Sir Mousu, Nebekam Mousu is in the building. Sir Nebekam Mousu, please come forward. This is what we're talking about, this is Nigeria working. This is Nigeria working. Yeah, please give it up for Sir Nebekam Mousu. And then, Sir Nebekam Mousu, your children are here, please, praise. Can the children just come forward briefly and say hello to us and they can go back to their seats? Please come up, they came in from Nigeria. Yes. Wonderful, wonderful. 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 Yes.
Pause, pause, pause. Show. Pause.
Mr. DJ. Yes. Thank you, thank you, Mr. DJ. Thank you, Mr. DJ. This is what I'm talking about. We have a program they call the Diaspora Updix. This is about the same thing. When children grow up, we develop a lot of role models like Mr. Shawori. These children are going, going to grow up emulating your activism and your belief in good governance. And then they're going to grow up to do a lot better than you, hopefully. So these are our heroes in the making, these children are heroes in the making. Give it up for them.
So we want them to feel at home. So Sir Nebekam, please tell us about the schedule of this event.
Good evening all. First, I must have to again thank the deputy mayor of Niwak, Honorable Lululumukuru. And I must thank the coordinators of this project today. And I must thank our special guest of honor, Shawori, our next president of Nigeria.
Take it back!
Yes. Honestly, the country that belongs to you and I needs vibrant people like him. And if you see these young kids, they have something they call continuity. What my foundation is doing is to create. Now, I want to ask quickly that what are you going to do differently from what has been on ground? Because you find aspirants coming during a campaign and they are manifestos. They say they're going to build schools, they're going to build hospitals, roads and all. We have these things, we have all these institutions in place. It's just, there's no viable legislative platform to, to, to move them forward. So what are you going to do differently from what the others have been doing before now? That's one. Then two, while I was in Nigeria, I had an opportunity to work with an Israeli who, on a very wonderful rainy day, it was this downpour. The guy, the Israeli looked outside and said something very profound. He said, "If the kind of, the amount of rainfall that falls in Nigeria falls in Israel, that Israel is going to rule the world." Like, he was like, "If they just oppose, move Israel to Nigeria and Nigeria move to Israel, it's going to change the world." This is my question now. Change, how long are we going to wait for the change which you are bringing back? You are, you are taking it back, how long is it? How long is this supposed to take? Because people want to run their first tenure, maybe after five years, they wait for the second tenure. This kind of changes are not something we want to wait for forever. Four, I'm sorry, the last question. I also want to appreciate your extensive reportage with Sahara Reporters when it comes to elections and politics. But then, you know that there has been reports over time that the Sahara Reporters have been funded by, by political divvies with respects to one particular one, the Golan-Jonathan era. So I want, I want you to answer this. Thank you. I will answer with regards to what am I going to do differently? One of the biggest problem with Nigeria's leadership is that they don't even know what to do in the first place. So doing it differently does not even happen. What are we going to do differently? When you think about our schools, for example, politicians are still talking about big schools. They are still talking about big buildings. They have not understood that technology can actually make more people learn than even a classroom concept in other countries are being reviewed for abolishment. Because people can learn a lot without having to move from one place to the other, without moving desks around. I said something in Nigeria and people were surprised that Nigeria, the world is no longer using buildings with books as libraries anymore. We are now using books that can contain a lot of libraries. For example, your device here can take over ten thousand books. This can take ten thousand books. And it doesn't discriminate against subjects, whether it is mathematics. You don't have to, just need to swipe it, it will give you whichever thing you want. But nobody is thinking along those lines in Nigeria because when you talk about notebooks, they are talking about contracts. You must have noticed something about construction in the US. When they were constructing something, they would tell you that it will be done by the end of year twenty nineteen, September. Four, but lo and behold, six months before that, the construction is done. And they don't come and apologize to you. And you'll never find a governor who will stand with his big fast stomach on the road, cutting the tape of the road that has been constructed. Because the way the commission road heads are, they open it up and you start driving on it. They don't have time for the nonsense of cutting tapes. I'm sure maybe they do in some places, but I've never seen Obama on the highway before, you know, when he was president, or Bush, or you know, even Donald Trump, trying to cut the tape of the road that has been constructed. In Nigeria, they are commissioning in rural states. They just commission a project in which they went and bought kids for people to be Chinese shoes. And the commissioner was very happy, he had an elaborate ceremony. Commissioning shoe shiners. And I'm not deviating from the question you asked. I'm just giving you a general context in which... And I'm not deviating from the question you asked, I'm just giving you a general context in which we will hit the ground running. Is it in the area of education, how long does it take? Look, let's even use the structures we have, let's activate them, before we start thinking about building the new ones. Because in Nigeria, when they describe hospitals, they will say that a hospital is state of the art. What is the meaning of state of the art hospital? Do you know what they call state of the art hospital? They will come and buy one cancer machine or a scanner machine, then they will tear it open. But when you go to hospital, how many times do you enter the scanning machine? It's useless. A body scanner is not what makes a hospital state of the art. It's the doctor there, it's the intellect of the doctor, it's the ability and the capacity of the hospital to solve medical problem that makes it state of the art. But in Nigeria, they will put the state of the art, and then they will be advertising in newspaper, who is from Igbo here? You know, Chimamane, Chimamroke, Chimamani. He used to put advertisements in newspaper every week because he built a tunnel. To glory be in God, I mean, to God be the glory. He did it for almost four years. These are the kind of characters that are managing our country. But the moment you have leaders who have vision, who have exposure, who have understanding, bridges don't have to last four years to be built. The Second Niger Bridge, how many kilometers is it? That we need to have the president visit the place to go and lay the foundation? The president don't need to go and lay the foundation of the Niger Bridge. It's a construction company that will go and lay the foundation, by the time we see it, the thing is done. But as long as you have these characters, jokers, mediocre, I mean mediocre persons running your country, forget about it, we can't move anywhere. Because in most cases, just to even start the construction or start the project, they will be waiting for the president for months to come and flag it up, they call it flagging up of the event. Even after the thing is finished, substandard most of the time, they will still wait for the president to come and commission the nonsense. They commissioned bough holes in Nigeria. They commissioned electric poles, you saw that one. So it's a bunch of lazy people running the country, and as long as you don't have competent people running the country, you are not going to have progress. So that is for me the answer to your, how long will it take? It will not take any longer than it takes anywhere. Because the advantage we have now is that technology has done what we could not do years ago. That is what I was able to show with Sahara Reporters. When I started Sahara Reporters twelve years ago, I went to meet a lot of newspaper editors. I started warning them, I said, your job is on the line. They were laughing at me, they were writing articles, they said, you, you didn't go to journalism school. They said, you know, journalism has become a small part of media. I asked a reporter in Nigeria who was interviewing me, ignorantly, I said, do you know the biggest media company in the world? He says CNN. I said, look at this, Facebook is the biggest media company in the world today, he didn't know. And you know, they are on radio every morning shouting that they are experts. And the Sahara Reporter thing takes me to your question about, they said Sahara Reporters is being funded, you know, if I had my lawyer here, I would have sued you for lying there. Because you know that Sahara Reporters has no engagement, it's the only platform in Nigeria, and I said anyway, I challenge them, that is an equal opportunity offender of the political class, whether you are mighty, rich, powerful, we don't give a damn. And I have said it over twelve years, what Sahara Reporters has accomplished, starting with nullifying or barring just third time agenda. It was Sahara Reporters that made it possible. When even the Jonathan that people are lying about today, when he was cowering, when Yeddua's wife and their cabal, they call it Turin Cabal, had him to ransom, and they didn't want him to become president. The deputy mayor was because at that time, where the ones who pride opened every corner of where Yeddua was hiding and announced to Nigerians that Yeddua had been brain dead. Yeddua was brain dead for five months, nobody knew, but Sahara Reporters was reporting it. In fact, Jonathan, after he won, sent a run to Douglas to me that I should pack and come to Nigeria. I should come and work with him because I'm the one who brought him to power. I rejected it, I said, the only thing you can do for us or to us is to run Nigeria in a way that we can be proud of a member of the minority tribe running Nigeria. What did they do? They looted Nigeria, we didn't spare them. So where is the big man that you are talking about, or is it Bolatino Bu? Who Sahara Reporters went and purchased the report of his drug history in Chicago and placed it still online on our website, you can Google it. That's why I said some questions you asked, I will send you back to Google. You can Google it and you can download his history, his drug dealing history. He was brought out by Sahara, no media house in Nigeria had their frontier to do it. We did that. So which of these people are you talking about? If you say Chinua Achebe, maybe he's a politician, I would admit. Or maybe you say Wadish Shoyinka, maybe I would admit. But for Sahara Reporters, our publication has been very transparently known as being funded by foundations. We don't even accept government advertisement in Nigeria. They've approached us several times, we want to advertise with you, and we asked them, what exactly are you doing that you want to advertise as a government? Is it the substandard roads or the bough hole that you are building? Or the schools that are in the city, or the lack of payment of salaries? Is that what you want to advertise? So please, there's no connection between Sahara Reporters and I've challenged people, I just came from Nigeria, as you know, the same question was thrown at me, I challenge anybody who has ever had any engagement with Sahara Reporters, whose position to expose it. It's already almost a month now that I came from Nigeria, nobody can come out and say, because it's not true. But of course, Jonathan and his people, when they lost the election, they attributed their loss to Sahara Reporters. No, and they accused us of bringing Buhari to power. I say that I'm saying in front of you today, the person who is responsible for bringing Buhari to power is Jonathan and Jonathan alone. It was his underperformance in office, his disappointing and wrongful performance that brought Buhari to power. If Jonathan and Jonathan had done what he's supposed to do as a PHA holder, even though we can't locate his PHA TCS, you know, Buhari would have been history by now. This is not the first time, Buhari has been losing the election. Jonathan won election against Buhari in the North in twenty eleven. So there's nothing special about Buhari, but in two thousand and fifteen, everybody was so disappointed with Jonathan that the only dominant political party was anything but Jonathan, it's called ABJ underground. Because people were so disappointed with him. Even our eastern brothers, I challenge them, what did Jonathan do for you? Is it the commissioning of the model of the Second Niger Bridge that you are celebrating, that never happened? Tell me what he did for you? Nothing, 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 nothing. Most of you don't know that I am actually from the Niger Delta region, I'm a Nijor Apoi from Ounno State. So me and Jonathan, tribally, we are supposed to be like this, but I can never support a failure. My conscience will not let me do it. So please, this whole story about Sahara, but I think Sahara Reporters became so powerful that people thought that without collecting money, it couldn't have been so powerful, and I understand it. Most of the media houses, even bloggers who steal stories from Sahara Reporters, they bought land on Banana Island.
That's right.
So they will be looking at me and say, why is Shawori still poor? I'm only comfortable with my poverty. And that's the reason why I can stand in front of you today and say to every member of Nigeria.
Thank you very much. Please, I would like to beg your indulgence to keep it very quick and direct to the point. We're going to be locating one question to an individual, and it's going to be one minute. We're streaming live on our Facebook page and our Instagram page, We4We TV, and we have a couple of questions coming in from there as well. The next question is going to be from Barista Chikese.
Thank you, thank you. I don't think I need that, I don't think I need that.
Unless, okay.
Good evening, sir.
Good evening, Barista.
My name is Chalit Chikese, and I thank you, I applaud you for your courage, it takes courage to do what you're doing. And I basically hope that you understand and appreciate the magnitude of what you have stepped into. Dr. King once said that the greatest level of maturity in a people is the ability to be self-critical. And Professor Achebe, whom you aptly quoted, said that the problem of Nigeria is the problem of indiscipline. It is not complicated. And that brings me to you, sir. This event was built to start at seven. Some of us got here at seven, a little after seven, I even had to leave and come back, because I really want to hear you. In anticipation of this program, there was a YouTube video that was posted where you protested, a Nigerian minister who came to an event, and I went half late. Is there any reason why you should not be held to that standard, that you held at me?
Thank you.